Just went to Xerox. My apologies to everybody here. I kept you waiting. I'm sorry I did that. Got my prop budget here.
How many words did you have last?
Four hundred and thirty-seven. PA has a number of new funds, ARP, affordable housing, and I want to say there's some other things that I did that formatted a little bit different. ARP is all in contingency right now because we haven't decided that. The only thing I was doing in the budget was six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, I think, transferred back to town.
It's been a while. Yeah, it's been quite a while since I've seen him. He's on my Christmas card list. So who got a Christmas card? Not an Emporium president. Yeah, what a nice man. What a very, very nice guy.
I've done a couple of times.
Yeah, he's on a different board now.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Probate?
Probation and parole. And you know who used to be on that was Batman Gina. Batman Gina used to be on that board. I don't know if Tony still lives in Emporium.
Yeah, yeah.
Commutes to Harrisburg when he has to do that.
Yeah, like I said, it's been probably eight months.
Yeah, what a gentleman. I tell you, he's very interesting.
Couple of years we still have. I'll be next time I'm walking up.
Ah, it's always the HRA, everyone.
Yeah.
The gaming control. Always, yeah, I was really.
He used to be a county commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. And that's where he first got appointed.
Yeah.
And then he got appointed to that board. I would see him. We always have the nicest chats.
Yeah.
So if you're talking to him, please give him my best.
Yeah, if you talk to him, say, don't forget your brother.
All right, I will call this December seventh, the 2021 meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners to order. Would all please rise and put a brief moment of silence. Biden, would you give us a question?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united on God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
And all please raise hands for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, best. Please go to the roll.
Mr. Phil Wilkman?
Here. 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 We have a forum. Mike, right?
Yeah.
So I'm horrible. I'm so bad at names. I will note that we are being live streamed right now. We're being sent out to the county's YouTube channel for public consumption. We're also being recorded internally for our purposes in compiling the minutes into that. And if anyone here has business before the board, we ask that you come up and speak into that microphone there just so that we can pick it up. I'll also note that if anybody has public comments today, we ask to keep your issues, those issues related to county government. If you want a road paper, advise you reach out to Pendot or your municipal officials. If you've got questions on a federal bill that's going through, I recommend you reach out to Representative Kelly, Senator Casey, or Senator Toomey. And if there's a state level issue that you might be having, we recommend you reach out to the appropriate state authorities. Moving on, row officer reports and comments. Any row officers in the audience? I see a treasurer upon back there. Rich, how you doing today?
I'm very well. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
You have anything to report about the bill that's already on the agenda?
Yes, I provided you with the report.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Approach the bench.
Approach the bench. Okay, good morning.
Good morning. I'm happy to submit the November 2021 Lawrence County Treasurers Report. The Treasurer's Office collected a total of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty million dollars, ninety-one cents, twenty months of November. Total of your today collections is twenty-seven point six million. We started off with fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven parcels for the common tax statements along with the spring interim bills, manifold interim bills. That's a total of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and two parcels collected. To date, we have collected forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two parcels, which corresponds to approximately ninety percent of 2021 tax revenue that has been collected thus far. Back in October, we mailed out seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six tax reminder postcards, which is good. The year before, we had mailed out eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. So people settled their tax bills a little sooner this year, which is great. So we're banking to that as well. As you can see with November's collections, we've got a good response to using the postcard. So that's where we are. The total of their tags that were sold so far is nine thousand, six hundred and twenty, and as of December first, the 2022 drug license, and now April purchase. Our total of their tags that were sold so far is nine thousand, six hundred, which is all being scheduled. And it's been a journey.
And you're aware, and you're aware we have on the agenda today that that's something that we want to move. So hopefully that helps out.
And it's approved in like every resolution that I do.
Yeah, that'll be, yes, that'll be approved, yes, today. Get that over to you and then you can start calling your end getting those things getting it ready.
Any questions?
Just a, just a quick question. And if you'd be, if you'd be maybe willing to do it, especially in the future, just for my benefit. You know, one of the things that our tax revenues for real estate taxes are three different directions. One comes to the general fund, one goes to the federal library system, and one goes to our debt service fund. Just for, this would be helpful to me specifically. If you consider maybe incorporating into the future reports, breaking that down. Because, you know, I look at the thirty, thirty million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, maybe a three cent number, and I immediately think, you know, that's all being pumped in. Because you don't think the library, you don't think the debt service, that awesome.
Good idea because when we proceed and you miss it, that's break it down.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That'd be great. Any questions or comments for treasurer?
Well done. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas, Rich. Do we have any other row officer, row officer representatives in the audience today who have anything to add about the bill that's already agenda? Or I'm not seeing enough. We will move on to public comments. Is there any member of the public who would like to make comment? That's approach bench. If you would be able to, you may have already written down, but if you'd be able to just give us the names and addresses for our, our purposes and compile them.
Thank you. My name is Justin Mason. I am a resident of Erie County, thirty-three, ninety-five, Rikers Road, New Pennsylvania, one, six, five, oh, nine. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Lawrence County Commissioners Board. My name is Justin Mason. I am the Field Director of the Pennsylvania Land and Liberty Coalition. I am a rural Appalachian resident of Western Pennsylvania, and in my free time, I choose to recreate down here at the Mines and Meadows Off-Road Facility in Lawrence County. Pennsylvania Land and Liberty Coalition works with rural Appalachian residents of Pennsylvania to inform them of the benefits of solar and the need for an energy transition to more renewable sources in consideration of the Pennsylvania energy market. PA's centrality in the PJM marketplace also means that the energy systems that we build here in the Commonwealth drives income and productivity for all of us. Wind and solar projects are only decommissioned or repowered every one to two decades, while other generation sources are creating waste every single day they operate. Many counties protect their landowners by requiring wind or solar project owners to cover costs and responsibly decommission a project at the end of its useful term. These terms often vary from twenty-five to forty years. Landowners can be protected by holding a project owner accountable and ensuring the responsible removal of turbines or panels by way of common sense decommissioning policy outlined in county's ordinances. A way to more energy diversity in Pennsylvania is through educating rural residents about the benefits for their communities. These projects will provide taxable income for townships throughout PA to benefit the funding for roads, schools, and emergency management services. As coal continues to be drawn down in PA, new sources will be needed to keep our pace with our exports and our statewide use of life. PA utility scale and community scale solar and rooftop arrays will help ensure energy independence for all of us. It'll keep utility rates affordable, provide vast economic benefit, and help to preserve property rights. There are no greater benefit than the benefit for farmers. That's why building more renewable capacity here in Western Pennsylvania makes sense, and that's why solar is such an important part of that capacity. Solar projects hosted here on agricultural properties will provide a means for a new passive income to help keep PA's farms legacy and family up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Also, that just is on top of solar. You know, we've been approached over the course of the last year by a number of firms and companies, which employ solar, particularly in different parts of Lawrence County. And I will say in partnership and largely in subordinate to the municipalities, however, we take the prime position. We take a secondary position of assisting them however they might need organs, construction, or zoning services, or anything like that. Our planning office has always been and remains willing to help them out, as well as our assessment office, however they, however they might need our assistance. So, you know, any development that comes into Lawrence County, whether it's solar or other, you know, our wonderful folks here in planning and assessment predominantly, have been working with some of those firms to, to do for them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Dan, you have a comment?
Yes, although maybe I should wait until you're finished. You two are both together. Is that correct?
Yes. We're, we're kind of two sides of a coin. Yeah, I'll explain that.
I'll wait till, I'll wait until this gentleman's finished. Thank you.
All right, well. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Chad Forsian. I am the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Conservative Energy Forum. So I'll, I'll address the organizations first. So our organization was founded in 2018, and we were founded by a group of Pennsylvania leaders from both public policy as well as the business community who wanted to have a voice for all of the above on energy on the right. So while we identify as conservatives, we work with Republicans and Democrats. In fact, we have Republicans and Democrats alike who support our organization. Justin's out of Erie, PA. As he mentioned, I'm out of Harrisburg. So I'll give my address as well. My address is twenty-one oh-two Mayfred Lane, Camp Hill, Pennsylvania, one, seven, oh, one, one, right across the river from Harrisburg. So briefly, my background, I started out in Pennsylvania, working for Tom Ridge and Mark Schweitzer when Governor Rich was with us. And, and then through the transition after the nine eleven attacks and worked for Governor Schweitzer for a time. And, and ultimately worked on environmental policy and administration. After that, I was hired by a couple of different agricultural organizations to work for agricultural public policy issues, both in Pennsylvania and nationally. One was the Landscape and Nursery Association. The other was the Irrigation Association. In 2018, I was approached by a group of folks, including our former Lieutenant Governor Jim Colley from the Corbin Administration, Jim Seif, who was Tom Ridge's Environmental Secretary, and a former PPL executive. A number of other folks. One name I would mention is John Lehman, who was the U.S. Navy Secretary under Ronald Reagan and also a member of the nine eleven commission. And what, the one thing that these folks had in common, there's a number of folks also from the, from the energy industries represented. And as founders, what they had in common was a desire for conservatives to be able to speak the language of renewable energy, as well as they can speak the language of natural gas and, and, you know, and nuclear, et cetera. So that all of the above was the overarching strategy there, wanting to be able to promote energy across the board in Pennsylvania, believing that a diversified energy system was best for the state. And to that end, we have gotten involved first in Harrisburg, where we worked on legislation. We have supported bills such as the C-PACE. If you're familiar with that bill, which, which was frankly, the first renewable energy bill that was introduced by Republicans as, as chief sponsors of both the House and Senate, and then passed with overwhelming numbers. And that was, that was the first evidence of our entry into the, into the public policy arena. We're working towards a bill right now called Community Solar, also a chief sponsored by a couple of Republicans in the House and Senate. That bill would open up new markets, and Penn State has done a study which tells us that it would bring about $2 billion of private sector investments into the Commonwealth in the solar space. And, and that bill is, creates a new market because it would allow for multiple parties to cite a single project on a single property owned jointly, which is not allowed under current PUC code. So it's, it's things like that that we are focusing on. We're trying to, to help open up the markets, increase competition and diversity in the energy space. And in places like Western PA, we have seen a lot of interest in solar, as, as was mentioned earlier. And what we've, what we've found, and we hear from farmers and we hear from energy companies alike, that they want more of a voice to come into communities with people like Justin, who is out of Erie, as I mentioned, and has worked in the industry, in the solar industry, and myself, to come in and explain how solar can benefit communities. So that's what we do. That's why we're here today also. So I wanted to hit on a couple of points. I'll be brief. I have remarks, but I'm not going to read all of them. The, I've talked about Penn State, why we were founded. And we founded the Land and Liberty Coalition earlier this year because while I tend to be focused on Harrisburg policy, we wanted somebody in the field, particularly in Western PA, who could focus on local government relations and efforts. And too often, the Commonwealth will propose and pass something that either appropriates a lot of money, the federal government does this too, or opens up new markets through legislation. And then, but townships will get a proposal for a solar project and they'll vote it down. And so the state and the federal government can do all that they want, but if local governments aren't supportive of, of expansion and diversification in the energy space, then it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. So we're trying to change that. And that's why Justin's here. That's why. The Commonwealth leads the nation in domestically produced energy exports. Just want to state that upfront. We are the number one electricity exporter in, in the United States. And we sit at the center of what's called the PJM marketplace. A lot of people don't understand this, but some do. PJM stands for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland, but it encompasses many more states than that. And Pennsylvania is uniquely positioned to export electricity because of its access to natural gas, because of its access to nuclear, and even the remaining coal generation markets. And now with renewables coming online, we see that there's great potential to increase those exports to the rest of the nation. We're exporting as far west as Indiana, as far south as North Carolina, as far north as Maine. A lot of people don't know that. So when we come into a small community, people try, will say, why do we need solar? And that's really the answer to that. It's an economic driver for communities, particularly again, as coal draws down, which is, which is happening, not because of the government, but because of competition. Natural gas and its, its generation in PA is what's driving down the coal market in PA. So we want to, we want to try to create more opportunities. And we work with natural gas companies that are actually diversifying into solar. So we see that, that instead of pitting these industries against each other, a rising tide ought to lift all the boats. So that's kind of how we're coming at the issue. So I want to talk specifically about agriculture. As we emerge from the ravages of the pandemic, the need for economic recovery for our farms is really important. Pennsylvania farms have suffered greatly. Millions of gallons of milk were dumped due to the breakdown of supply lines. Dairy farms bore the brunt of the crisis, but farms in every major commodity across PA have been eligible for emergency federal assistance totaling at this point more than $250 million since early 2020. Farmers overwhelmingly seek to diversify their profits and productivity. And when they look at solar, they find out that they can actually grow soybeans, pollinator friendly crops, they can put beet hives, and even raise livestock underneath solar panels. So there are ways of diversifying without losing the productivity of the land. I'm going to quote the Farm Bureau because they recently testified on this, on this issue. Broadly speaking, the Pennsylvania Farm Bureau is supportive of solar energy. Our energy platform embraces an all of the above approach that makes our country less dependent on foreign energy sources, but also acknowledges that landowners are in the best position to determine how to use their land for energy development, whether it's natural gas leasing, wind energy, or solar. Solar is already used on farms, typically by farmers who want to use renewable energy to supplement energy usage. And there are more than 4,100 farms that use some form of renewable energy as part of their business, with solar leading the way. Nearly all the solar installed on Pennsylvania farms is for armed farm energy generation. However, given the level of activity that we've seen with leasing and with the governor's recent proposal to power state buildings with renewable energy, we anticipate that a larger portion of farmland will be converted to solar use. Unlike other development of farmland, this is really important, and I'll, I'll probably close with this. Unlike other development of farmland, these systems are not permanent. They're designed to be removable so that decades in the future, a farmer could grow crops or graze animals on the land, and that's end quote. So I, I close with that because it's important, and this is what we, when we talk to townships, and we met with the County Conservation District just last week here in Lawrence County, had a great conversation with those guys. What we remind folks when they ask us about why solar on farms is that if farmers aren't allowed to invest in solar on farm, chances are they will talk to the next guy who shows up, who's a developer, who would like to build real estate on those farms. And, and, and the reality is, from a, from a revenue standpoint, it's all good, right? The problem is, is that when you put up real estate subdivision on that land, you do lose the farmland. It's not coming back. Solar, on the other hand, is temporary and provides fantastic revenue, both for the local government and, and for the farmer. And the long term, we think that this is a real viable solution to some of the struggles that we have in our agricultural space right now. So that's, that's my, my talking points for the morning. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and present today. And, and if anybody has any questions, be happy to take them.
I'll trip in with a couple more things and turn it back over to my colleagues. First and foremost, I also want, you mentioned the C-PACE program.
Yes.
And in the leadership of J.R. Harz, who's sitting right there, he's our chief assessor. I want to say Lawrence County will be the third, third county to opt into that program statewide. And so we were, you know, we're proud of that. Other thing I want to mention, you mentioned a number of different state initiatives. I'm not, but both my colleagues are on the CCAP board, County Commissioner's Association of Pennsylvania board. Loretta's the Secretary Treasurer for the organization, and Dan is the Region Two representative, which encompasses, is it north, north, southwest Pennsylvania? And so, you know, I would also refer you to, if you're going around to the county, I think that's phenomenal. I'd also refer you to potentially have a conversation with CCAP has a board specifically. I haven't already.
I just joined.
Oh, congratulations. Congratulations. You know, it might be, might be worth it to reach out. I believe there's an environmental committee through CCAP. I'm on the economic development and community development board as well, actually agriculture, for, in terms of committee. But it may be worth your while to reach out to those, those institutions as well, because they're really our lobbying arm at the state level if you're looking to push state initiatives. Other thing I want to note is, well, I don't know a whole hell of a lot about energy. My, my colleague here used to be in the energy industry. Dan was actually the, the chief lobbyist for Penn Power before he became a county commissioner. And so you see someone who is, you know, an expert in that industry, just through years of experience in the private sector. Only other thing I'll mention before turning it over to my colleagues or anything they might want to comment on is, you know, since this board came on board back in January of 2020, even very strong supporters of our agriculture industry in Lawrence County. And that's a tradition. It's not just been through this board, but it's gone back previous boards as well. One of the things we're doing today, actually adopting our, or not adopting, but introducing our 2022 county budget. And I do want to note that in that budget, for our agricultural program, we actually included an eight point four six percent increase in funding for our various ag programs. So that'd be Penn State Extension, our Conservation District, Black Fly and other environmental controls, and our allocation to Agricultural Preservation in Lawrence County. And that specific allocation is actually the highest it's ever been in county history for, that we're making this year. And so we, we will continue to make investments in that. We're going to continue to support that community. And I'll, and I'll close just by saying thank you, guys, both for coming in. You know, speaking for myself, I agree with you that energy diversification is a very good thing for the Commonwealth. It's a good thing for Lawrence County. And it's a way of future, and we're, we're happy to participate any way that we can.
All right.
And, and also to, to just add to that, that there, there is, you know, working with the, the agricultural community that the last couple of years have been more of a struggle than before, and for myself, and speaking with, you know, individual landowners, with their farms, that they are looking to diversify because it has been so difficult. And, and some that may not have looked into solar before are, are, are looking at it now because they, they, it's like you said, nobody wants to, to see the development on their farms, but, you know, now that maybe having a solar panel for a amount of time on there doesn't seem as unappetizing as it did before these last couple of years. So thank you so much for everything that you do. And thank you for coming here. Thank you both of you. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I walked in this morning and I thought, those two fellows look familiar. And I owe you an apology because you were at the conservation meeting last week, and you may have noticed I came in about an hour late. You were sitting down at the end of the table. You were in deep conversation with some folks, including Luke Vogler.
Yeah.
And we had another commitment that caused me to arrive late at the meeting.
And for Dan, and Dan's defense, he's never late. He's always there at the meetings on time.
Yeah, we tried.
Glad that he'd be at the other, yes.
So as I said, I walked in here and I've seen these fellows before, and I felt bad that I did have to miss your, your presentation last week. So I'm glad I got to hear it today. And, and I thank you both because obviously you had about an hour and a half drive to come down here. For you, it's about four, four and a half hours from Camp Hill. And I, when you, when you gave us your background, I thought to myself, as Commissioner Boyd mentioned, I, I was Director of Governmental Affairs for Penn Power, not PP&amp;L. The Penn Power, which at the time was headquartered here in Newcastle, a subsidiary of Ohio Edison, which has morphed into First Energy. And I, I was there a registered lobbyist and for about fifteen, sixteen years, from the mid eighties to about 2000. I'm betting that probably at some point, we probably crossed paths in the Capitol Building. We probably walked right past each other. And you mentioned some names. I didn't hear Dave Hess's name. Is Dave still around?
Oh, yeah. Dave, in fact, Dave, Dave, I tried to get him on our Leadership Council to, to join his former colleague Jim Seif. He, he wanted to, he wanted to take a step back, and he's, he's, he's not as busy and active, but he runs the PA Environment Digest, which is his, his new site. And he, he is working on that thing. I mean, he doesn't have the labor of love. He's basically retired now, but, but that's his, that's his. In fact, Dave was my boss at D E P in, in 2001 into 2002, before Katie McGinty came on board, and I worked for, for her for a period of time as well. But yeah, Dave, Dave is an unofficial advisor to our organization. We talk to him about once a month.
Oh, he's a, he's a great fellow. I have a lot, a lot of respect for Mr. Hess, and it's been years since I've seen him. So, no, thank you both. We appreciate the input that you gave us today. And sorry I didn't get a chance to meet you in person, officially last week, but it was good to see you now twice. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we will move on to fiscal retroaction. First on deck, we have a couple of regulatory properties we have to deal with today. I have a little notice here. It says, a letter was sent to me as part of the school district informing them that all bid requests for regulatory bid requests must be returned in 60 days or would be deemed approved. Taylor Township Union Area School District and Elwood City School District did not return their requests. That being said, our first one here. That being said, our first one here is a resolution, and we'll call this Resolution 2021-322. It reads, "Now learned to be resolved by Lawrence County Board Commissioners, the board is authorized to execute bid acceptance form accepted bid made by Tori Argaro in the amount of $500 for repository property located at Mountain Jackson Hickory Road, parcel ID 26-075700." I'll note that this was accepted by North Beaver Township. And it's now coming out as sort of the last member of the tax authority. Actually, it looks as though the school district. I just, I see that there now. And I would have said the same thing you just said, but looking up there and then looking at that signature, I think it was the school district. You caught that. I didn't see that. But yeah, all right, cool. But that being said, we have no indication that there's any reason not to allow the bid to go through. That being said, are there any questions or comments on what we'll call 2021-322?
If I may, it's very minor, it's very technical, and you probably get tired of me doing this. But I'd like to incorporate in the resolution somewhere that this property is in North Beaver Township. It does not say that in the resolution, and I appreciate if you both be willing to include that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Also, on the resolution, I had copied and pasted from the last one that we did. And I just noticed on all three of them, they say defeated. It should say accepted down at the bottom. So I'll make that change when we go upstairs.
Okay.
Down at the bottom where Joe's going to sign with the date, it says defeated. It should say accepted.
Oh, okay. So we'll make that a reservation.
I'll change some, yeah.
Good catch. Yeah. And that would be, that'd be back to your work. It'd be back to my attorney.
That's why we called her Eagle Eye Vanessa.
Well, with those two changes in mind, adding indications of North Beaver as well as accepting, not defeating, is right. I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2021-322.
Seven.
Second. Motion second. There is no discussion. Hearing none. Question or motion? But as before.
Commissioner Field, Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 323. This is a bid made by Logan Sheridan, the amount of $500 for a property located at Elwood Coppel Road, parcel ID number 36-085300. This looks like it came from the Wayne Township Supervisors, accepting that bid. Dan, I'm going to beat you to it here. We'll put in Wayne Township somewhere in that resolution.
We all vote the same.
Unless there's any objections, we'll change it.
Yeah, I'm fine with both. Thank you.
All right. We'll make a motion to approve 324.
Seven.
Second. Motion second. There is no discussion. Hearing none. Question or motion? But as before, roll.
Commissioner Field, Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And last but not least, also in Wayne Township, made by Mr. Logan Sheridan, $500 bid for property located at Elwood Coppel Road, located at parcel ID number 36-085300. Make those same amendments to the resolution itself. Anything, number one, Wayne Township, number two, the CCAP is not defeated. Unless there are any questions, comments, or discussion, take a motion for approval. We'll make this 324.
Seven.
Second. Motion second. There is no discussion. Hearing none. Question or motion? But as before, roll.
Commissioner Field, Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no after bids proposed, no received bids proposed. We have two warrant registers, one dated December 3, 2021. The other dated November 30, 2021. Other may call it to check those over and take a motion to accept and file.
Seven.
I ask your indulgence on a little bit behind you, Loretta.
That's it. You're older.
Can't argue with her. She's right. Yeah, look how much younger she was.
A year younger, huh? I'm younger a year. Yes, I'm younger.
I'm ready, I'm ready to second Loretta's motion.
All right. Motion second. There is no discussion. Hearing none. Question or motion? On paper, please, if I can say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Motion carries. Approval amendment from Tuesday, November 30, 2021. My colleagues may check those over and take a motion to approve the amendment for making necessary changes.
Mr. Chairman, if I can bring something to your attention, going back to your resolutions for the repository.
What do you have?
I believe you approved the same property twice. One on Walter Street that's on the agenda was never brought up. You did the one on Wayne Township.
I have two Wayne Township resolutions. You guys have two Wayne Township resolutions?
Yes. One is on.
Two different parcel numbers.
All right.
Here's the, I got the Walter Street one.
I don't think it was ever reported on the record that way. I believe you read the same resolution.
Oh, you know what it says? It says, that says Walter Street.
These are both, they're both over.
Elwood Coppel.
Yeah, they both say Elwood Coppel.
Well, I'll tell you what, the resolution that we passed still indicates, well.
We know if Walter Street is in Wayne Township.
Now it's Union Township.
Okay, so we should.
I'll tell you what, here's what we'll do here. Could we do the minutes yet?
Then some motion, second. I didn't, you didn't.
Motion second. Go in favor, prove the minutes, please, if I can say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Get that out of the way. I will take, what a clerical notion. Amending Resolution 2021-234 indicating, or sorry, 324 and indicating that the property is $500 at Walter Street, made by Matthew Cherry, I'm watching that name, parcel ID 34-231300. We have that motion?
Seven.
Second. Motion second. There is no discussion. Hearing none. Question or motion? All in favor, please, if I can say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, JR.
We have written communications today from Allegheny Mineral Corporation, Silver Rock Township. Allegheny Mineral Corporation locating the town and proposes to conduct overburden production class under state federal laws as written in the Non-Ole Circle Mining Conservation and Recreation Act. That certain mining operation located at Silver Rock Township, Lawrence County. Number one. And number two is natural miner operating permit renewal for select industries. Corporate letter to inform select industries, corporate located at 420 North Cascade Street, D.C., shall be submitted following authorization DEP. Application type, a natural miner air quality operating permit. Application contact, Buck Baldwin, Biore thing incorporated in the renewed. Any questions, comments on those ones?
Yeah.
Hearing none. I'll take a motion to accept and file. Four respondents.
Seven.
Second. Motion second. There is no discussion. Hearing none. Question or motion? All in favor, please, if I can say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask your indulgence for just a sec, actually? I want to take us back briefly to the Resolution 324 that we did amend. And can I ask Vanessa to verify, because I didn't get a chance to look at it well enough? Did in fact, the Union Township Supervisors approve the request?
It was the board secretary, but yes, she.
Is it the supervisors or the school district? A municipal property? Yeah, circle of union. Okay, it was accepted. I just, she showed it. I didn't get enough time to see it, so okay. I'm fine. Thank you.
Oh, and for context, before we get moved, for a week just recently started doing the repository property, so we're still getting our feet on that one. Before, they were sort of handled internally upstairs under the advice of legal counsel. We moved to a more public forum. So we're still, I'm making sure we get everything right on this, so I apologize for any confusion on that. But moving on to the big moment here, we have our 2022 budget presentation. This is the budget that we compiled with input from all three commissioners, from all of our department heads, from all of the row officers, from court administration, from outside entities over the course of 2021. So there were just a tremendous amount of stakeholders involved in making this budget. And as a result, culminated in this document right here, which is 458 pages of a budget. And this will be put on display after the meeting. We'll put it online probably, if not later on today, tomorrow morning, if anybody wants to access it digitally. But I'll try to keep this relatively expeditious. Before I jump into sort of the process that we went through to put together the budget, I want to jump into some of the stuff that this board has done over the last two years, is we're at our halfway point, which is kind of incredible to acknowledge. I mean, we're coming up on the halfway point of our terms. And so as it relates to fiscal management, I do want to highlight a couple of things that we've worked to control our expenses and to put the county into a solid fiscal position. So number one is, we have controlled our expenses through 2022. Our expenses, I did a little basic expense analysis, have only increased total at a rate of 0.7% per year from 2020 to 2022. That's 0.7%, not 70%, which is seven tenths of 1%, which is well below inflation, especially now. And so we're keeping, we're keeping those costs low. That's relative to, I just go back in time briefly, the same period of time from 2017 to 2019, a 3.7% annualized increase. And so we're really, really working to keep those expenses down, recognizing that our revenues are not coming in like they used to. Another thing I want to note, we ran a surplus in both 2020 and 2021. And even subtracting the dollars that went back into our general, went back into our bank accounts from federal stimulus packages in 2020, without federal COVID stimulus, the surplus was over $2 million. For 2021, our projected operational surplus, about $350,000, which is a positive indication for Lawrence County. Although we've held our insurance rates a functionally constant rate in 2021 and 2022. In fact, our meeting before coming here actually was with our insurance consultants. And they were able to negotiate a price pool on our health insurance for fiscal year 2022, which is phenomenal. That again helps us control those costs because that's one of those factors that we really don't have a whole lot of control over. And we're certainly thankful to the Rashidi group for the work they do, as well as our HR office on our health insurance. A couple of other things I want to add, we rebuilt the county operating reserve to a healthy level. And we started long-term capital planning to ensure that large capital purchases are spread out over a number of years as opposed to, you know, large fluctuations from year to year. You know, instead of having, you know, we need to put a new roof on the courthouse, for example. Instead of that roof costing, you know, $800,000 at one year at one time through capital planning, we're able to spread that cost out over a number of years so it doesn't have spike effects on the budget moving forward. So I did want to note that, you know, at the end of the day, fiscal responsibility is first and foremost for this board. And we're taking a number of steps to ensure that the county remains fiscally strong. A couple areas of concern that I do want to note moving forward. Biggest one is our CYS costs are increasing at an average rate of 16.29% as of 2018 to 2022. And that's the county's contribution to CYS. That's not total cost for the organization. Since 2018, we've actually seen an 87.15% increase in county contribution to CYS. And so if we're going to keep the county in a fiscally sound condition, we're going to need to continue working to get those costs back under, back under control. Also, another outside factor that does raise some concerns is that inflation currently is at a rate of 5.40% for the U.S. Northeast region, which is the highest that we've seen in a very, very long time. And that's going to cause, you know, some concerns on some of our expense line items as we adjust to new prices. Also, the revenue is unfortunately for Lawrence County declining at an average rate of negative 0.32% from 2020 to 2022. So we're actually, we're losing revenue. We're not growing unfortunately in terms of our revenue base. And so again, moving forward, that is an area that we're going to have to be very cautious of, very mindful of, look to ways, look to ways to increase our revenue flows. Another area that I'll note that we mentioned a little bit earlier, we have minimal control over insurance rate increases in future years. While we've been successful with all those rates constant in previous years, that's no guarantee that it will be held constant in future years. If we're going to stay in the black, that is an area that we need to continue to look at. Also, just briefly, I'll note that I ran actually pretty complex revenue expenditure projections through the year 2026. This year, for 2022, again, based on this CYS factor, based on inflation as well as some other expenses, I'm projecting us to be basically flat for 2022. I'm not expecting a surplus. I'm not expecting a deficit, which, again, to me, given all those factors that have been previously discussed, is still pretty good. That being said, when 2023 hits, we are going to be faced with some tough choices as a board if our expenses, again, particularly out of CYS, continue to increase at the rate at which they are increasing, as well as if inflation continues to increase at its current rate. In 2023, based on my revenue and expense models, we could be looking at a deficit of $826,888.99, all else constant. And again, if we can't get some of those, I could give back more to the CYS, but if we can't get some of those CYS costs under control, that deficit will grow through the year 2026. In 2026, project deficit of $5,618,987.51. So it's imperative that we continue the work that we've been doing for the past couple of years to continue to get our costs down as low as humanly possible, to continue to control our spending, as well as continue to look at different ways to improve our revenue situation. So that's sort of where we're at right now. That being said, in terms of the 2022 budget, jumping into the budget process, how this was all made. From June to July, the board commissioners reviewed our audit. Our audit came out May or June of 2021. This is for the 2020 audit. And we also looked at our prior year revenue and expense trends to see where everything was looking to be heading for 2022 and B1. In August, our first pass budget was compiled, again, just looking at trend lines, looking at average costs, looking at revenue, looking at our revenues, every single line item was analyzed. And the budget was literally built from ground up. Again, in 2022, we moved to a zero-based budget model where every single line item was literally rebuilt every single year from the ground up, taking into account actual costs, actual revenues, actual expenses, to make sure we have the most accurate, up-to-date budget possible and that we catch any potential, you know, excessive costs before it becomes an excessive cost. From September to October, we conducted budget reviews with all our various department heads and row officers for court administration to make sure that they didn't have any requests for additional funding in their budgets. Or in some cases, they came in and said, hey, you know, I don't need this much in that line item. Or can we move, you know, some money from this line item to that line item based on whatever factors their office might be encountering? So there was a tremendous amount of input from our various internal stakeholders. In November, literally the latest report I got last night, we were compiling the 2022 budget, the draft that you see in front of you today. And in December, budget presented right now and adopted closer to the end of the month, probably after Christmas, after the public giving them time to review, provide any comments they might have to it. And that's sort of the budget process, how we do it in Lawrence County. Couple budget highlights, and this is the big one. There are no new real estate taxes in Lawrence County for fiscal year 2022. And we were successful in holding the line on taxes. And that again was through a tremendous amount of work by everybody involved, whether it be from our department heads or row officers, court administration, just everybody that comes together to make this document what it is. And I am, I am happy, very happy to say that we were able to hold the line on, on real estate taxes. Also note that there was actually a reduction in the general fund of 4.21%. And the reason for that. And the reason for that was necessitated by revenue decreases. And so again, instead of increasing taxes or increasing fees, this board went back to the drawing board and we said, hey, where can we trim back? Where can we cut? Where can we potentially work to make things more efficient? Where can we not replace employees that may have retired? And as a result of that, we were able to reduce our general fund expenditures by an equal amount in which we saw a reduction in our revenues. As I mentioned during our highlights, we fully funded operating reserve is in place, which means that signifies potential creditors that Lawrence County is in a strong fiscal position. And we also have introduction this year specifically of capital budgeting, which I'm personally excited for because again allows for an additional layer of fiscal accountability in our budgeting process. I just to touch on a couple of the initiatives that are in the budget that I want to touch on, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues for anything they might want to touch on. You know, there's a saying in government, it's show me your budget, I'll determine what you value. You know, it's a way of saying, hey, you know, where do you put your money? What do you value as a community? What do you want to see prioritizing your community? And the county actually plays a tremendous role in this because we largely have a large supply of discretionary funding from a local governmental standpoint of any local government in Lawrence County. School districts, you know, are entirely devoted to educating students. And municipalities, a lot of the cost constraints, so the county really is in a position to provide a tremendous impact, tremendous benefit to our community. We've done so in a couple of key priority areas in our budget. You know, I'll add, if the 2021 budget was about strengthening Lawrence County's financial position, the 2022 budget is about bringing Lawrence County into the future. And we've made substantial discretionary investments with the goal of advancing our community. So within this budget, we made it very clear that in Lawrence County, we really value three major policy areas. These areas I want to highlight. Number one is economic and community development. Number two is infrastructure and transportation. Number three is public safety, crime prevention and victim protection. So I just want to give you some highlights of some of the investments that are being made in 2022 budget to those policy areas. For economic and community development throughout the 2022 fiscal year, the board commissioners plans to make a series of strategic investments into critical neighborhood revitalization projects and economic development initiatives. So to highlight a couple of those, we're providing in the budget $100,000 to the redevelopment authority of Lawrence County, which will provide that entity with seed money to grow, to really become an institution that can provide economic benefit. They can start looking at how to improve our downtown cores. They can start looking at how to bring back our neighborhoods with this seed money. And I'm sure the conversations will be ongoing with Amy McKinnon, who's the executive director of the redevelopment authority, as well as members of that board, on how they plan to allocate that funding again to grow our communities, to grow our tax base, to attract new residents into Lawrence County. Thankfully, our hotel tax revenues are rebounding, as we mentioned in previous meetings. And as a result, we're able to project $230,400 for visit Lawrence County as they work to promote some of our recreational assets, they work to bring in tourism dollars to the county. I'll add, that comes on top of additional investment from the board commissioners in 2021. We allocated that agency $80,000 of discretionary funding. They were able to modernize and update some of their advertising program. They were able to build out new videos as they relate to different tourist attractions and areas of competitive advantage Lawrence County has over other areas that relates to tourism. So we're really looking at tourism as a big driver, not even necessarily for tourism dollars at face value. It's a way to get people from Pittsburgh, get people from Cleveland, get people from Akron, get people from Morgantown to Lawrence County, get people from Erie and Harrisburg to Lawrence County. And hopefully convince one or two of them that maybe it might be worth locating to Lawrence County. That's the real value of tourism in my mind, is to get people in your community that might not otherwise be there, they might fall in love with it. We've included through a combination of discretionary funding and CDVG funding, $311,893 for our ongoing median township revitalization project. To date, we have, I wouldn't say six houses. We have applied for numerous grant streams. I'm hoping that we'll be in a position to announce two successful grant applications here in the next couple of weeks for that project. And that project's an example of what you can do when you partner, local governments partner together with nonprofit and with successful nonprofit ventures to really rebuild a community from the ground up. You know, we actually went through that neighborhood parcel by parcel, looked at every single property in it, identified anything we could do to bring the house back to a better shape, rehab the house, enforce code in areas that haven't been enforced, clean up trash and vacant lots, include sidewalk connectors, best stream connectors. And we're really rebuilding that neighborhood from the ground up. It's a great project, it's caught the attention of the state, which is nice, and we're continuing to plug away on that. We've included $514,614 for light remediation in our community, specifically targeted demolitions, to tear down buildings that have long been eyesores and long been problem spots for Lawrence County. That's through a combination of fair funding, which we've been very successful at and being granted through the state over the last couple of years. The county demolition fund as well as some CDVG allocations towards light remediation. We've included $110,000 for Penn State Extension to allow them to expand some of their programming as it relates to agriculture, as it relates to master gardens, as it relates to 4H, again, to prepare the next generation of ag workers to go into the industry. We've allocated $117,000 to Lawrence County Conservation District, again, an increase to them to allow them to continue their work and their conservation efforts across the county. And we've included $54,500 for agricultural preservation, which is the highest amount ever allocated to the ag preservation board that I'm aware of in Lawrence County history. So the total spend, when you factor in all of our different economic and community development initiatives, amounts to 200, I'm sorry, $2,906,371, which we're really hoping will provide a significant impact from a community economic development perspective. As it relates to infrastructure and transportation, the board commissioners plans to continue to partner with our municipalities to pave more roads and fix more bridges. Additionally, I'm very excited about this, the board is reinvesting in the Newcastle Municipal Airport and remains the second largest public funder of the Newcastle Area Transit Authority. And so to that and under this budget, we've included $150,000 for a new airport terminal project. Looking at the different federal funding that's coming down over the course of the next few years as it relates to infrastructure. Our airport is in need of upgrades. And I know the Airport Authority Board, to be at point, is looking at making improvements to the airport, whether that be runway improvements, whether that be terminal improvements. And so we've included in this budget $150,000 for the design of the new terminal building at the airport. And that's something that I'm passionate about flying, I'm working on becoming a pilot myself. And so I'm happy that we were able to include that.
You'll have a place to land.
I still can't land. Don't think for one second, don't you think for one second I can get that thing on the ground? I can take off, but I can keep flying. There's a reason there's a guy sitting beside me. That's it's, yeah, we're working on it. We've also included $1,299,465,000 for municipal road and bridge projects. Those both include past allocations, which have not been paid out to municipalities, as well as future allocations that we're planning to make to make Lawrence County's roadway and bridge infrastructure strong and to ensure that those critical infrastructure points are paved. We've included $800,000 for county bridge projects, largely as it relates to banks covering bridge remodel and rehabilitation, as well as general maintenance for those bridges because they're critical components of our economy. If you can't get people where they need to go, your economy's not going to do so well. And then we've also included, again, with the second largest public funder, $22,162 to the transit authority, the request of transit manager David Richards, which allows the transit authority to continue to tap in $7.4 million, tap in $7 million in state and federal funding to allow our residents again to get where they need to go. And that's coming off an additional $40,000 investment made by Lawrence County in 2021, where we are the first rural county in Pennsylvania. I believe we might be the first rural county transit authority in the United States to use machine learning through Carnegie Mellon University to optimize our transit routes and look at different ways of structuring and providing transit to our residents. It's that's another project the state's about to eye on, and we're really a leader right now in rural transportation in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And so our total spend on infrastructure and transportation is $3,077,734. Again, that's through a combination of our transportation accounts, as well as some CDVG allocation specific to transportation. Last area I want to touch on, before I turn it over to my colleagues, is our efforts in public safety, crime prevention, victim protection. You know, Commissioner Vogt, every so often, he mentions so much of what we do in Lawrence County is driven by crime. And so to that end, whatever we're doing to keep crime rates low and work to catch and put away bad people, you know, that's critical accounting operations, that's critical to controlling our costs. On top of that, a critical component of restoring our community is ensuring that our residents are safe. And that means making significant investments into countywide public safety organizations and initiatives. And so to that, I'm including in this budget our $2,880,491 for the 911 center. Director Parrish is with us today. And we continue to ensure that that facility operates 24/7, that our residents are always able to call in and request assistance when they need it. And our technological capabilities there and our radio capabilities are up to snuff in making those investments. It includes $623,859 for a fully staffed detectives bureau. One of the 20 years, our district attorney is very passionate and is helping municipalities where they might bump into cracks. And so, yeah, as we mentioned earlier, a lot of municipalities with the cost constraint, they can barely afford general police services, much less detective services. And so our DA's office really stood up to provide those services throughout Lawrence County. And so to an extent, Lawrence County actually has a representative of our detectives bureau working directly alongside DEA in enforcing drug crimes, actually around the country. One of our detectives was in California recently. We don't pay for that, but we get reimbursed through Feds. But was actually in California recently, working on a drug bust there. And so we're very proud of that detectives bureau, it's fully staffed now at eight members. And that ensures that individuals who might have been victims of complex crime have somewhere, more complex crime, have somewhere to go. We included $82,702 for our victim witness program to ensure that victims of crimes are protected, that victims of crimes are informed, any movements related to those individuals who perpetrated crimes against them. You know, and that again is an initiative that led through our DA's office. We've included $85,000 for continuation of our ongoing crisis program, which is funds a co-responder position for individuals who might have mental health or drug and alcohol issues. Police might not otherwise be capable of interacting with on their own or not have the training to interact with on their own. We actually have a position of Lawrence County Government funded through our Department of Mental Health that goes out with police, that works alongside police to make sure that those individuals who might not need to go to jail, they just might need some mental assistance, they might need some drug and alcohol assistance, that they have access to those systems and that those individuals are taken care of in our community. And I'll also note with that, Mental Health just received a 300, it's a 600, so it's a grant. But it's over two years to add to our crisis services. And again, make sure that our residents are able to get the help they need. And lastly, in that category, includes $396,074 for our emergency management agency, our emergency management grant, again, to ensure that our residents are safeguarded against everything from flooding to, you know, anything that might cause harm to those residents. And that's again through Director Parrish's office. And so the total spend in that category is $5,411,343. And so, you know, that's in addition to all of our other expenses, our allocations, and everything that's included in the budget, everything from the assessor's office to the elections bureau, to, you know, our court of common pleas. You know, it's a lot, it's something to realize how many areas of citizens' life the county has the ability to touch. And more so than any institution on a local level, you know, we're able to, I think, make a real difference through the initiatives and services that we fund in the budget and that we're able to fund in 2022 with no tax increase, that we're able to fund with a balanced budget. So with that being said, again, this will be on display upstairs, you pay for copy. We're going to work to get final copy out on, not final copy, print copy out to our website, again, either later on today or early tomorrow morning. And I'm sure there will be tweaks to be made as we move through December. But this was a, you know, a lot of people put a lot of time into this budget and I'm glad that we were able to come out with what I think it would be a really good outcome for Lawrence County. That being said, I'll turn it over to my colleagues after that, so a little wait for any additional comments they might have.
I'm exhausted for you. I first compliment you on a job well done with the time that you devote to it. Last year, this year, delving into the numbers to the extent that you do, almost to a point of, but it goes on in that head of yours sometimes, right? The numbers just total, total, oh.
That's what the mental health grants are for.
That being said, now, you know, the points that I would make for Mike Rippe, CYS, you know, you and I, we're out there, we're going to, we're going to do our best. Mike Rippe was here from CYS, he's a newly appointed physician.
Contract lawyer.
Yeah, is a contract lawyer. That's to hopefully, as the year goes on, to start keeping closer track of those contracts that we do pay those percentages out to that creates that $2 million that the county is obligated to supply. So we're going to definitely, well, I rounded it, I rounded it. But we're committed to working on that and getting those numbers down while at the same time, you know, continuing to provide the services that we do. And then as you said earlier, just, you know, like Dan does mention that, you know, a lot of our problems that we do have are the secondary, tertiary ripple effects of the crime issues and the, you know, the problems that we face as a county. So, you know, the fact that we can offer the services that we do, we need to continue that. But at the same time, you know, just be aware that maybe there's some changes that we can make and some additional monitoring that we could do. So I'm glad we have the monitoring, the program, the contract monitoring program up and running. And that I look for, with things to happen with that, with delving into the programs and successes and ways to tweak them so that we're not out those 10, 15, 20% matching funds that we do get from the state. That, you know, coming into the second year, it's hard to believe, we're in our second year. First year was just, you know, hit the ground running in dealing with COVID. And now this year, coming out of it, going back into it, and now with the inflation rates, the supply chains, that, you know, lack of employees throughout, not only here, but of course across the state and the nation. It's, I think managing to do what we did, i.e. you leading the charge with it, and having a surplus and not raising the knowledge and being able to maintain the employee level that we have, I think to me is vitally important. While doing that, that we still continue to have the services that we do. And that's so important. And at the same time, doing what we need to do to move us into that arena where we are competitive with other areas. You know, the two projects that we have going on with Stonecrest and the Hohman Township are so, so vital, you know, whereas I'm not a pilot, but I don't, you know, I don't want to be a pilot. But realizing that, you know, that maybe advancing that terminal at the, at our airport can create a different, a different atmosphere and bring smaller craft in. And like you said, just changing the terminal, the atmosphere that I think you guys were talking about in Franklin, stopping, they have a restaurant and something like that, where those are things that we maybe haven't thought of that, hey, why not? And the money is there, you know, through grants and different types of opportunities that we can do that. So I think that, you know, by opening our eyes to those different things and having the monies, you know, for the infrastructure that we persist with for our municipalities, I think is great. I am, I'm pleased with what we have come up with and hopefully, you know, look forward to 2022. Still continuing to watch, you know, see what we can do and be conscious of that, of that budget. CYS, Mike, John, everybody else there. We have a lot of pressure on us to perform, but I, but I think that we can do that. I think that we're in this process. I certainly think we can to be able to help out the budget while still providing the services to our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate all of your many hours of hard work over the last number of months. You voted a great deal of your time on this. And a lot of good things have been said. I'll simply repeat, bottom line is it's a balanced budget with no property tax increase. with no property tax increase. And I think that's good news for the entire community. And as Mr. Boyd noted, by law, we introduce it today and we have to have it on display for three weeks. If I'm not mistaken, our plan at this point is on the 28th, barring any unforeseen issue that might arise, that we would adopt the budget on the, on the 28th. Again, thanks for all your hard work and same to Joe and to Loretta. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The only other thing I'll add before closing out is at the end of the day, this is, this is the people's budget. And so to that end, I, you know, we're certainly welcome. Any member of the public wishes to, any member of the public wishes to provide input into it. We welcome their feedback, you know, if they'd like to see certain programs included, if they'd like to see certain programs taken out. You know, I'll note it is, it is a balanced budget, which means any changes that we make, everything still has to be net zero. However, you know, this at the end of the day is, is we work, we work for the people. This is the people's money. And, you know, I, I think all of us are certainly open to, to any suggestion, any recommendations, any, you know, any, any programs that the residents of Lawrence County might want to see included. So again, it'll be online, latest tomorrow afternoon. And this document will be on display in the commissioner's office through the end of the, the budget process, at which point I'll get updated once printed and distributed. But yeah, thank, thank you to everybody for their hard work on this. It was a, it's always a large undertaking when you're looking at $91 million. But it's, it's a, it's a good, it's a good budget, it's a balanced budget. And we're certainly happy to continue to provide the services that we do to our community with no increased cost to that community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, some comments? We're ready. You're on deck.
Okay, well, just a, a comment for our, our visitors that are here. That I appreciate, I appreciate you coming and being here. And I always, I always say I'm a, I'm a city girl, so learning the, the farming community is, is a ongoing process for me. And, and, you know, in, in, in talking about the solar farms, this kind of, that was one of the solar prospects for, for our community. I have to say that, you know, in defense of our farmers that are here, that, that are in Lawrence County, and it, and it's in the entire farming community, you know, they're, they're, it's generational and, and they're not making hundreds of thousands of dollars doing what they do. It's in their blood and, and they work tirelessly because it's, it's their legacy. So when I, when I speak to one or two landowners and, and they, they talk about, you know, putting the solar on their property or someone who had been against doing so because they, they, they wanted to keep it, you know, with as much farming as they could, to know that these last couple of years that have caused such, such devastation to the farming community to just see and, and chat with them and talk with them and, and hear them say that, that that's something that they're, that they're thinking of doing, that they want to do, that they feel that they need to do, or to be able to keep their farm. You know, that, that's a difficult decision for them to make. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are here, that you're, whether you're going to, you know, all the different comes or whatnot, I don't know. But it, it brought that to the forefront for me to know that, that, you know, they want to keep their, their farmland viable. And if this is something that they need to do or want to do in the meantime for that short amount of time and still have it be agriculture in the future at some point, as opposed to selling out to a development. I, I think that, I, I think that, that's, that says something even for the community itself. So, so I just, I just wanted to say thank you for that. And, and, you know, just that what a hard decision that would be to make, choosing to do something like that. But, you know, their, 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 their lifeblood is in that land, so. We have our, our flag at half staff for two, two reasons. Today is the 80th anniversary of Pro Harbor Day, December 7th. And then also with the passing of, of Dome. Yeah, 98 years old.
True patriot.
Right, definitely. So I, I'm, if Dan wants to elaborate on something more with it.
I think Morgan's next.
Oh, Morgan's next.
I'll try to keep it brief. You've told me so far tonight. Two things. Remember one, I was driving into work today and I, I drive by Westminster College every day. And they have in full production, the movie that they're filming up there. It was really cool to drive by and see green screen deployment and lighting and all the different streets blocked off. You know, I, I've never been to Los Angeles and never been to Hollywood, but I got a management street damn close to what it feels like to be there. You know, people don't realize how much goes into making those movies. And it's, it really is, is a point of pride for our community being able to host a production at that scale with, with, you know, very, very esteemed actors, very esteemed directors. It's, it's just, it's just a great thing for Lawrence County. I want to say they're done at, at the covered bridge in, down the park.
Is that accurate, John? I believe that's true. I believe that they're, they're finished.
Only other thing on that, I'll add, just because we're touching on airports, two things. Number one, I, I didn't know this until very recently. They, they did a study a number of years ago on the economic output of the airport for Lawrence County. Right now, the airport, which we don't contribute to on a regular basis, it provides $6 million worth of economic output to Lawrence County as it stands in its current shape. They're one of the few airports in Pennsylvania, municipal airports, that's operating black, which again, this is a rarity across the state. The other thing I'll note, back in May, and I thought this was very interesting, I was, I was driving back from, probably I was at an event down in Kentucky. And I stopped to meet a friend at a restaurant. We were talking and, and for whatever reason, he brought up unprovoked airports. Now, two neighboring counties down specifically, this is just an anecdotal example down in Kentucky, both had airports. One of those counties made substantial investments to the airport. They extended the runway. They allowed for larger commercial freight traffic to, to land at that airport. They provided more combinations to pilots. And the other let their airport slip. They didn't make those investments. And as a result of the investments made by the county, by the county which invested in this airport, they actually managed to locate warehousing and distribution centers for a large portion of Amazon's operations in the East United States. A lot of Amazons, aircraft carriers now, and haulers now fly out of that. That small, was a small county airport in the rural county in Kentucky. And as a result, a tremendous amount of economic impact has been created in association with that. And so to that end, you know, just touching on what Loretta mentioned, we've got two pretty sizable developments. One, we know is coming to Lawrence County. One, we're, we're still working through some of the financing, but we're hopeful. And with those developments, you know, as, as was mentioned by RIBC, and as has been mentioned by John McCarter, large portion of what they're looking to attract in terms of industries, logistics and warehousing space. And so to that end, you know, I'm hopeful with investments into that facility, especially with it being so close to that Bay Road site, that that would provide even more attractions to companies that RIBC and that John McCarter are looking to attract. I just wanted to add that in there. You know, it's, it's just such an overlooked feature of our community, but it has potentially such an asset. I'm very, very glad that the board decided to invest in them.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to talk about the flag, so thank you for doing that. I appreciate that you made note of that fact. That's all I have, but I would like to request, if I may, maybe a three-minute recess?
Sure. Would you like a recess?
Absolutely.
Oh, take five.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Someone's in a trench. Gary, you're taking a recess too.
What?
Are you taking a recess too?
I'm just grabbing a